Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Village of Ryback Plenty Board for September 7, 2021. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for PAL and lead the PAL book at Lisa Bear One City at East Market Street. The Apple contest, the asset we hold in over to the September 21 meeting. That item has been taken off the agenda. Second item to the Elizabeth Pentropolis, and I'm going to mess this up.
Just a second.
Huh?
I mean, a public meeting was announced, right?
Yes.
If there's anybody here who wants to speak, why not be able to make the next one? We should at least ask.
Okay. Is anyone here for the public hearing on 78 East Market Street? You are?
Yes.
Okay.
I can make the next one.
Huh?
I can make the next one.
When you're here?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we're going to have the plans up and, you know, put the plans up on the screen and look at them and it'll be easier.
Do you want to do it that way or would you want to speak?
Well, you want to make some comments now?
I think, we'll come back, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. I didn't, I didn't think. Okay, so we'll continue on to the second item on the agenda. 30 Livingston Street proposed above-ground pool, 10 by 20 foot deck around it in the historic district overlay. Thank you.
Take a look at this letter from the board.
Thank you.
Anyone want my card? Your reading? Okay. Hi. I'm Jeanne DeBarnett from Architect's, our representative, Betsy, who was supposed to be here, but I haven't seen her. And I guess the last time we came in front of you, you asked us for a letter from the engineer explaining why the pool is where it is. And this letter is basically him explaining that he went to the health, for health, and had a discussion about a pool. And they said, the only way to accept it is if it's an above-ground. Which is, yeah, above-ground pool.
Okay. This is going to be a 10 by 20 foot wave pool.
Right, exactly.
We've got the plans.
Right. So the house and the garage are essentially existing, and we're just going to, you know, we're just asking to build a pool in the back, and she's doing it because she needs to, physical, inside view.
The pool with the deck and the fence are out there.
The fence itself is already there. That was part of the original application. It's really just a deck in the pool.
Any questions from the board?
If I remember right, the last time this was here, there was a question about coverage.
Yes.
Did that get straightened out with the CEO?
Um, this was only, this is the first time I'm seeing this document here from the engineer. So if I, if it's the first time I'm seeing it, then the CEO has not seen it yet.
So there was a question whether it constitutes coverage and what would the calculation be?
Right.
You don't have that calculation?
I do not, and I'm sorry. I thought actually this was something that was going to be done internally with you guys, so I apologize. It's my fault. I didn't understand that. So do any of them talk to you exactly how they do that?
I mean, based on your table here, are these figures correct?
Yes.
So what you're stating here is that the maximum lot cover as proposed with the pool and the deck is plus or minus 26%?
Right.
So based on your numbers here, you are underneath the 30% maximum lot coverage.
This is from the engineer, not from the neighbors. So I didn't say that I did not.
So I mean, it's going to be up to the board whether or not they will take the engineer's word for it, or if they want this to be screened by the zoning enforcement officer to make sure the math is correct.
Correct.
Aren't they always reviewed for correctness by the CEO?
If they're received in time.
And this lot coverage includes, I think the question had to do with, I guess John was raising, does the pool include?
The deck, does it fall under that 30%?
The pool and the deck.
Right. And I must say, I did not follow up on that. It's my fault. I thought that that's something that, um, I'm happy to do that.
Does the engineer explain his calculation?
I think he basically, what that is, is the house.
Yeah.
The house and the garage is, I don't know what to say. I mean, if you look at the drawing, there's no way that's 30%.
Right. So we need, we need an answer.
That's all you get.
Unfortunately, from the zoning enforcement office, they're taking, because I'm not sure about decks and pools.
Right.
About a semi-above-ground pool, if that's going to count, but, you know, we really need interpretation.
I understand completely. So what's the best way for me to do this, to set up a meeting with your zoning person?
Um, yes, I mean, I first need a copy of the engineer's letter electronically, and then he needs to explain his calculation beyond the second paragraph there in his letter.
Well, I guess the question, and I think the relevant question is, does the deck and the pool fall under this 30%?
So the deck is considered?
Coverage.
Coverage.
Well, then I think we need to really review what this really means, because I'm not sure that this, I'm sure that his numbers are not correct in that case. That's the question we need to check. So is there a way for me to get in touch with your zoning person and just have us?
Yes, I can send you his contact information.
You can email me his plans, I guess, but the discussion hasn't yet answered that.
Right.
It's this and that, and if it's still on the queue this, then you'll have to come back to us to go for, the zoning board of appeals for a variance and say, we, we need to do this because of this, and then come back to us.
I'll get rid of the deck, basically, just as long as the pool falls within that 30%. We'll be okay. I just have to double-check.
Right, but then gravel or, does, well, again, what counts and what doesn't count? You know, gravel, tiles, does that count or not? The deck, is it considered a structure, sort of service? We need, if we get interpretation, you come to an agreement, what counts and what doesn't count, then you'll have a better, that's what you want, come back.
I totally understand. When is your next move in?
September 21st.
When I look at the definition of a structure, which is used for building coverage, it includes swimming pools, decks, as well as tennis courts, gasoline, you know, all sorts of other things, but swimming pools and decks are included as building coverage.
About patio, about?
Not a patio.
Boosted.
No, parking lots, driveways, and patios are not structures.
Yeah. So you might be looking anyway with stones or?
Got it.
Cement or bricks or whatever.
Let me, let me have a discussion with your zoning person.
Okay. But the pool is going to count, so it's under the law.
I gotta make sure that it's okay.
Okay?
Just an observation, you mentioned, maybe we'll get rid of the deck. Well, it's partially above ground.
Right.
So there will need to be something around it for people.
Well, the, I mean, I could literally just have the edge of the pool, like, you know, and under the stone.
I see. A little ladder.
I have to, it's only a foot and a half of one person.
Okay, okay.
But I will look at this and I'll get back to you.
You get the definition of stones, tiles, bricks, whatever, that doesn't count.
So I just, I just need a motion to continue to the September 21st.
Do we have a motion to continue this 30 Livingston Street to the 21st of October?
I'll make that motion, Mike.
Question, do we want to have a public hearing on this? Normally, we don't on site plans, but we have that as an option, and it seems to me this might be the sort of thing that neighbors might want to weigh in on.
That's at the planning board's discretion, John?
Yes.
Yeah?
We do it on more complicated or current controversial, and, you know, this may affect neighbors. They may want to weigh in. It seems to me if we're delaying, it wouldn't be that hard to set it up as a public hearing for next time.
And do it all at the same time?
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
I think we're at the 21st of October, we're talking about, not September.
Yep. All right, well, so.
So can we amend the motion to include a public hearing for the?
On the 21st, okay, so.
Yes.
Return the 21st, continue the site plan review, and send out the information for a public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
John, who made it?
I made the first.
Oh, I seconded it, okay. Those in favor?
Hi. I'm sorry, I missed your name, can you?
Jeanne DeBarnett.
Yeah, I'll take that, for the, for the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Michael Cassano, 1315 Livingston Street, amendment to the site plan for the constructed balconies.
Yes.
Evening. So, um, has one of these down? A window was taken out, a door was put in the balcony, it was constructed on the front of the house. It wasn't in the site plan, and it's in the historic district, and it's quite visible to the front of the building.
Thank you. First picture, on the front of the building. Just something we say is very visible, we know we're talking about.
Was there a reason why this was done or wasn't on this approved site plan?
So I'll give you the history of this little balcony. The balcony, we started this project in 2019. The balcony was on various diagrams and drawings and sketches. One of the premises for the balcony is, you'll notice the windows on the side there, the bay windows. Those are 18, 19 inches in width. And the balcony is off of a bedroom. So one of the discussions was, could we provide some kind of egress for the person in that bedroom, other than those, those windows? Those were the original windows, which is a little strange, because the other side of the house has the same bump out, but those windows are much larger. This, this house was kind of, I don't know if you guys remember, the lower deck was, was enclosed when we bought the house. It was part of the house, was an actual room. Well, I'll use the term room loosely, but I'm not sure how that was even allowed to be done, but.
The original house had?
You get that picture from 2012, I think.
Right, the original, what I have a photograph of.
From Google Maps.
Wow.
Notice though that it has shutters on the building.
Yeah.
It seems to have disappeared as well.
Yeah. The paint was holding those things together.
We can like separate the two, like, we talked about the balcony and what you guys think of that, and then we can talk about this later.
Is this, as you handed out, the approved site plan drawing?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Mr. Budwick dropped off.
Oh, okay, so that's, you guys requested two elevations, one from the south and one from the east, showing the balcony on the plans.
All right. But it says issue date 18, I was just wondering, other than the balcony, this apartment's a person?
I have the original from the meeting, John, if you want to see them.
Yeah, and just say, it was so trivial for them to add it, because it actually had been in the plans at one point. Things sounded a little chaotic with COVID and, and us trying to get the plans done.
The existing floor plan shows the side porch on the lower level completely enclosed. And then.
You can see it's closed on the outside.
Yeah. And the proposed floor plan shows the covered porch extended around, so that sunroom removed.
You wanted to put it back to the middle.
Yeah.
Right, I'm sure why they did it. The rim was literally five feet wide.
Yeah. balcony is than the windows on the bay.
John, is that the 2018 approved set?
Yes, that's the approved set.
Yeah.
Does it show a porch coming off that?
No.
No.
It also shows a banister between the columns, as it was there, and those are not there in the current configuration.
And it shows the shutters.
And it does show the shutters.
Sorry, John, a banister coming off of what?
You see the banister between the columns on the front porch?
Yes.
Those are shown on the site plan.
On the side, oh, okay.
There was never plans to keep the shutters. You had done shutters to the front. I'm not sure.
That's the set of plans you came to the meeting with to get site plan approval for.
This is the permanent?
I have an email.
So if by permanent plans, then those are the plans that were submitted for the building permit application, which are two different things.
Those did not work.
Then that's kind of why we're here.
Yeah, her reason why we're here is the balcony.
Yes.
My opinion on the balcony is, I'm not opposed to a balcony there as an egress for a bedroom, as you said, but it wasn't on the approved plans. It's in the historic district, and as such, the look should be more historically appropriate. This steel is not. Chasworth columns in Georgia manufacture banisters and balustrades that would be more wood-like to the original. The Star Institute used to have a second store balcony 100 years ago that had something similar to that.
Or at least match the?
I have a bunch of examples from town here, from the village, where steel or metal is used as the, on the little balcony. Actually, Merbou is probably a really perfect example, right at every window, there is a metal wrap in some places around the little porch.
It's not that it's metal, it's that it looks historic to the origin of the house, and this is modern California. It, it doesn't go, I mean, there was a window there, you replaced it basically with a door, and, you know, it's a changed work order, which I understand in big construction, things happen, you want to do things, but our thing here is that anything that's approved is what you're supposed to do, and if you want to change it, you have to come back to us with, you know, examples, you just can't do it and think, you know, it's okay. We have to approve everything that's done.
And Merbou is not a historic building, it's a brand new build, so there's.
I just, I mean, I have other examples too, I'm just saying it's not unheard of, it's not rolling here, not just Merbou, but other, I mean, I can show you guys.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of buildings in the village, and sometimes they get built without permits, sometimes they're not in the historic district, sometimes they were preceded when the historic district was entered into law. So I think we probably should deal with what this looks like on this building. And I tend to agree with Mike, is, is that I'm not opposed to the balcony, I think it could be done, it's set back, it's not right on the facade, and it, it does make sense to have an egress out of that second floor. So I would be okay with it as long as the railing fit with the house.
At least it should match the ones below.
Well, they would be too low.
Probably a little low.
But they, you know, you could, I'm not sure what the code requires, probably four feet, but you could do something.
That is to code, those overrims there.
Right, how high are they? How high are they?
I think they're about four feet. The separation between the metal bars is, is the code.
Yeah, if they were done in a wood pattern consistent with the railings on the rest of the house.
The basements on the rest of the house or the?
Say again?
The basements on the rest of the house or the?
Well, not on the front of the house, the ones you took out between the columns were wood-turned.
Yeah, there are no railings now, despite the fact that they're in the approved plan, there are no railings in the front or, or side, as the approved plan showed, so if there were, of course, it would make sense to be consistent with what was down there. I'd like to see railings in the front too, but sir, just to get to your point about you've seen some other cases, as John's explained, the only way you would see that in the historic district, in other words, you may see a lot of things on houses that are not in the historic district and are not historic assets like your house is. And secondly, if you did see something like that in the historic district, it could only be because they were grandfathered in before the historic district code was enacted. No one would ever be allowed to do this now to, with a historic building in the historic district, so. And it would have been easy if, you know, if we, I agree, it also makes sense to have an egress up there, and I, nor do I have a problem with that small landing on your egress. But the railing doesn't fit the house, the style, the neighborhood, it's not a historic railing. It's not, it's not something that if you had asked us during the original discussion, we would have approved, so now it's a matter of what to do about that.
Do you have the side view you could bring back there? So there's no railings, because there's railings on these plans.
Yeah, there's no railings on the side.
No railings on the front.
Or the front.
And no shutters anywhere, and those are only approved plan. And I think you got the contentions of the board, wouldn't have a problem with this looking like this, the absent railings that are supposed to be there, albeit, you know, another foot taller to meet the code, but, so you have no plans to put the shutters back? You have no plans to put the railing back, even though they're all in the approved plan?
The shutters were not on the permit.
This, they're, they're on the plan that Ryan gave us.
Is the, is the goal of the planning board to maintain some kind of continuity across, you know, the historic district?
Yes, we're trying to restore.
Okay, so I'll say this, I did a count of the 55 homes on Livingston Street, all 15 have shutters. I believe, do you live on the corner of Beach and Livingston? I believe your house does not have shutters, and it probably historically did.
My house had shutters on the upper floor, on the first floor.
But there's no shutters now.
Yeah, when I bought the house, it didn't have what was there, was maintained, you know, sometimes things are lost.
I'm just saying that 27% of the house is on Livingston, have shutters, and that's just Livingston, like, I didn't go around to the other homes.
Let's put off the shutters again until we finish with the balcony.
I agree.
Because they're two separate questions. The balcony is a fixed item, and I think it should have a historically compatible railing, and that is not a major fix.
Well, so to the fixed part, let me ask this question. The actual steel rods, you know, the, the things that go across, are you guys opposed to those?
Yes.
We could have discussed this a year ago.
Yeah, we have a, we have a steel, purely modern steel railing that could, could never have been on the house originally. What would be appropriate, if there were railings on the bottom to make railings to the top, they should be wood or appearing to be wood. There are other materials that are wood-like that are acceptable, but it would have to be something that would be in keeping with the house.
Yeah, it's just a little ironic, because this is probably one of the things that people comment on the most about the house, that they love it.
Well, you might get some people tell you they love it, and we hear other people that brought this to our attention complaining that it's a violation. So, you know, you may, you, you know.
Again, to that point, the whole enforcement thing?
Yeah.
You can talk about this, just, I'm not bringing the shutter back into it, but.
There you are. Stick to the railing.
All right, so let's talk about like railings and fences and, you know, there's no enforcement, like, there's no continuity.
Sir, you're wrong, sir, excuse me a second. There is enforcement, and the problem here is that you got an approved plan, and then you didn't meet the approved plan. You went and did things that were not approved. Now, the fact that you went through, and your builder and your architect went through all the trouble you needed to go through back in 2018 to get that plan approved, frankly, you must have known that any change to that should have come back to us. You knew, you knew what it took to get the plan approved.
This, so this, we were not trying to hide anything here. That door was there from very early on in construction.
Let's talk about the railing.
Okay. I just want to make the point, because it seemed like you were saying, like, we're trying to skirt the system. This was just an honest mistake, something left off the plan.
Fine.
We are before you, seeking, you know, approval for this. You can try and maintain the historic nature of the entire neighborhood, and I applaud you for doing that, but if you look at the neighborhood, and if you, if your thought process is that there's no room to introduce something new into a, you know, a, a district like this, then there'll be no, there's no room for creativity. It's, it's purely stick with the old, and that's it, that's the only option you have.
Yeah, it's not.
Is this like just a small little twist on the?
Look, we allowed this house to be massively increased in size, because you made, we, you agreed to maintain the front of the house in its historic nature. So we, it's not like we're stifling creativity or inhibiting development in the district. We're allowed, we allowed permitting you to put a huge addition onto the back of this property and make all sorts of changes in the backyard. So it's not like we're inhibiting creativity, we're just, according to the law, which we have to follow, any new addition to a historic house has to be compatible. It has to be in similar sort of materials, in similar sort of colors, and similar sort of construction techniques, and especially if it's visible from the front. What's in the back?
That's the term that we're all discussing, is similar. It has a mahogany floor, it has metal railings, which we have examples.
Not, not for this type of house.
There's never been a metal railing put on since the historic district was created.
That was approved.
That was approved. Yeah, that's approved. We have had dozens of people over the years, in the last 40 years, take off the aluminum siding, take off the vinyl siding, restore the claviers, restore the shutters, you know, restore the windows. We've had a lot of people who really seriously upgraded their houses. who really seriously upgraded their house to bring them back to the way they looked 100, 150 years ago. That we're trying to preserve. There are not very many houses in the historic district that are uniquely exciting, special houses. But the 500 homes that were built 100, 150 years ago together as a historic district are quite substantial in the state of New York. And we're just trying to preserve that, asking people to restore, maintain, renovate, modernize the house. People bump out the back, add a master suite. They bump out the back, add a new kitchen. Can't be seen from the street. Use the same molding and trim all around it. We allow people to upgrade and modernize the houses. We just want to respect the integrity of what the houses looked like. And I have photographs of a lot of these houses from 100, 125 years ago that looked beautiful, and we want to just try to maintain that way. And we're following the law. The law specifically says, "Any new construction or alteration of an existing structure shall be compatible with the contributing historic property itself and the surrounding historic properties in terms of height setbacks, roof shapes, cornice features, proportions for sods and window openings, porch details, materials, and rhythm of spacing along the street." So those are the sort of things we're empowered to look at. And in this case, I think it's... That railing is not compatible with the historic quality of that house, its age, its materials, its porch details. So alls we're asking is that if you had come in and asked for a change, we would have directed you. Now that you came back after having put on something that wasn't approved, or asking you put on something that is approvable, which is a railing that looks like it belongs to the house. We're not stifling your criteria. You can still have a porch off your roof, off your bedroom. But we're asking that it be made compatible. So I think that's a respectable compromise. And from the opinions of the board, I think that's the best you're going to get.
There are manufacturers out there that recreate things in modern materials that are bigger than what used to be done, which doesn't meet the newer building codes. Chatsworth Columns in Georgia, I think, is one of them. Beautiful historical. It doesn't have to be wood. They can... They look wood, but Versatec, AZEC, or some of the products are out there. And that's a much more appropriate fitting for that egress.
We allowed renovations to the Blue House on the corner of Livingston and Melbury, which had rotted away because it was wood, and they found someone to reconstruct this out of some material that's not wood, and it looks just like it, and it's okay.
There's also antique salvage yards all over America. I mean, I've bought stuff from Albany, from, there's whatever his name is in Kingston. There's a big one in Kennybrook. There's one just outside of New York City. I mean, you could find either new or something that's been rehabbed from a building and just sitting there. Yeah, that would look good.
And what are we to do about the railings and the shutters that are on the approved plan that are not on the house today?
Yeah. It's unfortunate, because I don't know if I remember. I certainly don't remember, and I don't know if anybody else does, whether those railings were original to the house. Or...
I don't think I have a picture of this house. There's a lot of pictures of this on Livingston Street.
Yeah, because a lot of the railings were put on afterwards that aren't historic. And there's a lot of houses that don't have railings.
Yeah, actually, that would be the minority of houses with railings, particularly on a porch that's level with the ground and...
But...
And you walk off the porch.
But did you retain those railings so we can take a look to see?
All that stuff, the railings. I'm not kidding when I say the paint was holding those things together. And underneath that purple latex paint was like tons of lead. I mean, those were original. They had to have been original to the house.
What was original?
The shutters.
Yeah, but the railings were rotted, too.
Oh, yeah, all those posts right there?
They were, like, every single post.
All those posts on the bottom were rotted.
Yeah.
Actually, chunks of the deck were rotted.
Yeah, I'm sure. The point being is if the railings were original to the house or of a historic period, then they should have been retained. If they were some sort of 1980s, you know, Home Depot version of a railing, there's a lot of houses that didn't have railings. So it's unfortunate unless we have some evidence to know whether those railings were original. They look pretty good from here, but I can't tell.
You would notice that there's a, like, a two-pager on this house that's part of the historic code.
From '76.
'79, yeah.
Yeah, something like that. It's just, you know, here's what we think the age of the house is. And there's... The picture is the front of the house.
Are there railings on it?
I can't remember. I hope that maybe you could.
Well, I don't know.
I don't... I want to say I don't think there are.
Yeah, but our architect says that the railings, she actually suggested we don't have railings because she said we want historic history.
Well, you could take a peek if you want to look it up. Here. Consortium of Rideback History. And go to the lower down. You see Village Historic District. It's on the middle of the menu, I believe, on the bottom. And then the Archives of the Historic District, up near the upper blue line. And then Search on the left side. And then type in, was it 14 Livingston?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's going to come up. And then Original Property Information, the first one. And this is 2012, that was 1979. The William Platt House.
That's all?
No, that's not it. So you got to go to... The numbering changed at some point.
Try 13, Jeff.
Try 13.
Can we add the upgrade for 901?
Buckley House. Railings, they didn't even have the thing on, the extension there. The railing went all around the house. And their shutters were gone from the top. They're on the bottom. Is that the board that looks like it today? So the shutters on the top weren't there. But the railing was.
Is that railing the code right there?
Yeah, that would be. And what does it say about it? If you go up a little more... No, I mean, down a little more, up at the screen, right? And keep going, there's a description of what it says about it. South three-story block, big able-end street building, two-by-two window, plain surround throughout, plainboard cornice, door retains rear venturing gates, pilasters. Before 1850, so built around 1830. Can you get rid of that?
Yeah, that one down just there.
Building which has lost most of its original detailing through the addition of modern siding to the building, conform to the size and scale of other similar surrounding structures. That was built around 1830 is the best guess.
Yeah, it looks to me like the railings were original, but they're probably lost at this point, right?
Those aren't the railings that were on the house.
Yeah, they weren't original, that's what it is.
The railings that were on the house were actually up to the round part of the pole. Actually, those poles don't even look like they're the poles.
Yeah, different poles, too.
Yeah, can you bring up the other poles, just to...
2012.
At least you got a drawing. They're turned.
Yeah, you have it.
Yeah, you have it.
Got it.
Yeah, those aren't the same.
Those aren't the same columns.
But you'll notice, just to flat out, just the whole give-and-take thing, the detail going in, we actually took those pieces and restored those and put them back down.
The brackets, yeah.
Yeah. Those columns and the balustrades in the image here look like the detail of the columns here and probably in the original approved one.
But they weren't in the '79 photo.
Exactly. But they're turned columns with relief where the rings are painted. And we see...
Can you go back to the historic page?
We see now that they're just square columns.
Can you go back to the historic page? Because the next column over is a 2012 recertification that was done.
So hold on that for a second. So those look like square columns.
Yeah, maybe chamfered, but square.
Yeah. And I don't know if I could tell about the balustrade.
See if I can make it a little bigger. They look like, they look like they might be chamfered.
Right.
Unless that's just a break. At any rate.
They have been replaced since '70.
Yes.
If you can go back one to the search page and go one column over, to... That's 2012, those pictures. That's what it looked like in 2012. There are photographs there.
Yeah, this looks like the same one that...
Some go on that.
The balustrade wasn't hanging, was it?
They're... They're around there.
I think, I think everything but the brackets looks like it's different.
Yeah. And there were no shutters upstairs in 1979.
If we're going to talk shutters, I think it's hard for us to enforce shutters. They're on and off all over the village. I, you know, I think it's great that people restore the shutters. We restored the shutters that were left on our house. But I didn't go out and replace all the ones that weren't there anymore.
Well, the sad part is that some people do put shutters on. There's an example right across the street from us. But they're like the black, you know, plastic...
Vinyl ones, yeah.
I mean, they put shutters on...
They look horrible on that house.
They put shutters on that don't look real, in that the window's this wide, and they put a shutter this big and this big. They would never cover the window, so they don't look anything like they would actually work.
Any shutter shall match the size of the window opening. Only pure functional, that's in the code.
Yes.
The only two forms that I was able to identify that actually look like they had original shutters is the historic house on Livingston down by you, the...
The Montgomery House?
Yeah, the Montgomery House. And actually, Rachel's house has shutters that look original and can close.
Yeah, minor original can close. But I only have one facade, one floor.
Every house of that century, in like the 1800s, had shutters. Do they all have them in the same...
Well, if they're original house, we like to keep them. But I'm not sure that we can require them, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So I would be content...
I think we go back to the balcony.
I would be content to have a compatible-looking balcony railing, and the rest, I could live with the changes as it is. I mean, the house was restored in, you know, 90% of its structural capacity. And for that, we're grateful.
Would it be acceptable for that balcony, that wasn't anything we bought? That was custom-made for us.
Custom-made?
Yeah. So that cost some money. Would there be any leniency towards having the horizontal metal if we wrapped the banister part in like cedar and the post in like a cedar post? And just have the metal horizontal?
Yeah, I can't see it.
I think what you should do is go to your architect, who specified those balustrades and those railings for the front of your house in the original plan, which are not there. But he specified them because they went with the house, and they would actually look good. They're something that could have been there. That modern steel railing could not have been. And I can't, I can't think of any wrapping that would make it appear as though it fit the house for that period.
So is that a no?
It's a no from me. Well, the rest of the board can speak for themselves.
Hi.
The balcony, I'm sure, was a great expense to you. The balcony was not in the plan. You put the balcony in without approval. We're not suggesting tear the balcony off and restore the window. The only thing we're saying is, for the appearance of the house, change the railing to come back to us with something that would fit that house period-wise. And as Michael's pointed out, there's a lot of materials that are acceptable. It doesn't have to be wood, because there are materials that don't decay and don't need to be painted very often that look just like wood that are acceptable. And your architect would know that as well.
Yeah. Vinyl is not approved, but AZEC and this sort of sheet vinyl is not approved. But the hard vinyl that you can paint is known by the brand name of AZEC, and there's another brand.
Versatec is another.
Yeah.
There's a whole bunch.
Making mold, and they're oblivious to rot, and that's what I know.
They are. Looks as good as wood, right? You guys can agree with that.
Yeah.
Well, I think when it's painted, you can't tell the difference.
Yeah.
That's the whole reason why we agree to it. Because until you go up and try to chip it off with your thumb or something, you can't tell whether it's wood or not.
So it's an easy question. The corner, can it just be square and then just have the balustrades come down according to code with a railing? Or would...
Yeah, come to us with a proposal, and we'll look at it. But yeah, it could be L-shaped with one corner post and balustrades in between to meet code, and a top rail. Something that would look like it's on the historic house, like in that 1979 picture.
So to summarize, if not yourself, your builder or your architect should have known better than to do that. But what we're saying is, despite the fact that it differs from the plan, you don't have to put railings in. You don't have to put shutters on. You don't have to rip the balcony off. You don't have to restore the window. All you need to do is come back to us with a railing detail proposal that will be acceptable for the historic district overlay code.
I'm saying draw something up, and we can...
Do you want just the two elevation, south and east?
Yeah.
You don't even have to do the whole elevation. Just do a blow-up of that particular area.
They're going to be able to take exactly what they gave you, tweak it a little bit, and spin it back.
Yeah, but we might want something a little larger than that to decide on.
I would also suggest visual examples of what you're going to propose.
I don't need to laugh. I just, I went around and looked at all the balconies around here. They're all different. There is no common, commonality between them. They're really distant. So we'll draw something that...
So will that I need Mr. Chair's motion to continue this to the September 21st, 2021, for anyone meeting.
If they think we'll be ready in time for that, I'll call them and let you know.
Okay, all right. Like the first week of October, whenever that is. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion to table this.
Second?
Hold us in favor. All those in favor?
Um, just so I understand, we're tabling just the balcony?
Correct.
It's off the table.
Off the table. Next item on the agenda is 21 North Crossnet Street. Everyone got a letter from the zoning board of appeals approving variance with a five feet of setback.
Hello?
Good evening. Nothing's changed in the plans we looked at last time?
Except that I want to.
Vertical?
Yeah. Nothing's changed. Everything is as I originally presented. Yeah, I mean, I submitted a complete package a couple of weeks ago.
I think we will look at the package and see it again.
Can I see it again? I have four. Were you at elevations or just?
No, you had elevations.
Do you have something a little?
I think.
More than what?
I submitted some bigger stuff. Maybe it's 15 different apartments, but we'll see if I have some.
I only got the small stuff. I think you sent me the bigger stuff electronically, Scott. I don't remember getting anything bigger. I think the one issue was on one draft, it says 20 by 30. And then on the printed ones, it says 20 by 32.
Yeah, so it's a 20 by 32. Um, that's what's on the site plan.
Mr. Decker was at the CBA, the yesterday. He asked standard question about what about drainage of water onto the neighbor's property?
That is correct.
He always asks that question. I forgot to ask that question.
That's okay, he had, he asked it. Yeah, and, and the water will be, I've got it, and the downstreams and downstreams will be turned away from the adjacent neighbors' property, as is the rest of my house. All of the drainage goes into drywall. It's not surface drainage. So yeah, that's.
And the siding is?
The siding is wood siding. Yes, it is, it is cedar beveled siding. Uh, everything is, all the details are the same as my house.
It'll be painted white?
What's that?
It's gonna be painted white?
I'm not sure.
It's gonna be painted though.
It's gonna be painted, yeah, absolutely. It's not gonna be wood, it'll be painted. I'm contemplating another color. It's likely to be white, it's gonna have a red roof for sure.
A red roof, I was about to ask. It's gonna be a red roof.
You know, I put the red roof on 20 years ago. It used to be silver. But yeah, that's, that's it.
And the, it's, it's the same as the plan we saw two meetings ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I haven't submitted anything new or anything different from when I first met.
If we ever get the money, my wife wants your roof on our garage. If we ever get the money, my wife wants your roof on our garage.
Before the pandemic, metal leaks were very close to tossed to us. I think I agree with you. Lately.
Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just would like to say that when Scott did the house up the street, it was a big influence for getting on this historic district and just improving the neighborhood and his work is impeccable.
Up the block, that was a great job.
When we, when we took a walk,
Yes.
the, the guy from the state, oh, that's obviously old. It's a grand new house.
The only giveaway is that it's red.
Well, there's some old parts that in there.
You know what, you know how old that house is? The dean of the house is 1798.
That was one of the oldest street. And I questioned why it wasn't on the original historic district and they, the people that did it in 79 didn't do it. And now it is.
Yeah.
Also, that, that house has the staircase from 37th South Street in it. Before we demolished the house that was falling down at 37th South, Scott removed the staircase and reinstalled it on, on that house on Oak Street.
Jeff was kind enough and led her kind enough to give it to me. And it's the centerpiece of the house, it's spectacular.
It's beautiful. And also took a stencil of the detail from the, over the.
I did. I stole, but that, you know, the house is on Oak Street, a pretty nondescript. So I did take a little bit of architectural license and I took the gingerbread off of that property that Jeff owned and I stenciled it and I used it on the on the porch ratio.
The, the old house, it was, it was a beautiful house. The theory of leave the windows open for five years and see what happens was being true.
Yeah.
And it had to be demolished, unfortunately.
So I'm pretty bought into the historic thing. I know that it adds value to what we have here.
Someday we'll get to Parsonage Street.
What do you mean?
Is that house in?
My house?
Yeah.
Parsonage. Oh, no, I'm in that district.
That section?
Yeah, 850. The first block, I think, is.
Is a, okay.
Cause on the corner was a cavern and on the other side was store, general store.
All right, anybody have any questions?
Make a motion to approve with the condition that colors are compatible with the house. So these things are not determined at this point. You can't do garish fluorescent neon.
I don't know whether it should be white or not, though. I, it might be much.
Yeah. I'm not a big White House fan myself, but.
Hey, White House.
I do.
Yeah, but I don't know, maybe in that far back, it could be something a little, a little bit darker.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. I thought you were gonna bring up some of my postcards, David.
No, no, those postcards have been a valuable addition to the collection. They've used a lot
Are they?
in a lot of presentations that we do with show people. I have a picture of that.
It's helpful, right?
And, and it's helpful for a lot of research that we do. And appreciate your 450 postcards.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't have to get together. I think I had another 40 or 50. Okay.
Thanks.
Take it easy. Next item on the agenda is Rhinebeck Vinyl Vault, 23 East Market Suite, Suite E. Post signage for the vinyl record store. So records are back?
Apparently, he's got a lot of vintage ones, he says.
People still have turntables?
I have 3,000 records in my house.
You do?
Yes.
Oh, maybe a bottom one.
My speakers are this big.
Turn that mic toward yourself and your name for the minutes.
My name is Andrew and last name is Scandariato, which I can spell.
That's all right, I've got it, Andrew. So I'm talking my signs.
Yep, talking signs representing the, and Kevin over on the wall.
Do you have, Jeff has it?
Okay. So this is the corrected version that Ryan sent out today. Added the existing, so so there's an existing signage in Century 21 in the 11 salon and this will be added to it. So I have a few questions. The section five, the proposed signs, two 13 and a half inches by 47 and a half. I see that the second one, the 20 by 24, is the proposed door sign. The third one, 27 by 27, is the proposed hanging sign. And let me just bring that up. No, that's the email. Stop.
You're hanging with Microsoft.
I think, I think I have. I'm trying to get. No, don't send me anything. Okay. In the original document, the idea was to have these three signs in the window?
Yep, windows on them.
Okay. So I see that the door sign, which says that it's 20 by 24, is the second row. The hanging sign, which is 27 by 27, is the third row. But what are all these?
Those would be the first row.
Can't be.
We send those over to our client to show him a visual mockup of what it looks like so they include that and what we sent out for the permit. So that's representing what the pool, we know it's actually paid and decided.
As you know, Jeff, buy, sell, that is directional signage. Cause it does not say Rhinebeck Vinyl Vault over we buy, sell new and used records, that considered directional signage, that's what the zoning enforcement officer felt. Then the record with the stylus.
Yes.
That would be the second one.
But don't these count towards area?
I think if you review the code, the areas based on the direct advertising of the actual business.
Well, we buy, sell, use records, that's advertising the business. That's not directional. Directional is like, you know, hours of operation.
But I mean, the issue, the issue is, like, if you look at the Amsterdam, they have dinam, they have hanging signs on the porch.
And I always thought they were illegal.
Bar, but we've gone over it, they, they're directional signs.
No, they're not.
Okay, if we think.
That's the news, CEO making up stuff.
Right. These dimensions, the reason, the reason I assume there were two dimensions here, 50 and a half by 25 and 24 and a half by two and a half is that this must be the 50 and a half by 25 and this must be the other one.
That's small measurements.
Okay.
To direct them, cause there's another door.
These are the three windows. So when we add taking, taking for granted that this is basically the two sections, the one and the two. This is 13 and a half, 47, this is 13 and a half, 45. Just those together comes to almost 18 square feet.
Yeah, yeah. Just the reason.
So I contacted, if the board agrees, and this was just a suggestion by me, please use main entrance. I mean, if that's the case, then the village out here should be, you know, we have main entrance on our doors. Does that count as signage? I think that's why it was removed.
So this building would have three window signs, a door sign and a large hanging sign. Five signs.
And my point, my point, Mr. Chairman, is this. This is the hanging sign and that's correct. This is the door sign and that's correct. This here should be those three windows, which doesn't total 18.9 square feet. It totals.
It's just about 21 inches.
17.9 square feet. So the, the the calculations on this sheet don't map to the. Yeah, the, the next.
Because probably there was a discussion between me and the one person, Jen. Unfortunately, the original author of this, Jody McCaslin, could not be here tonight. Jen was the go-between from timely signs and Andrew is gonna be here tonight. So potentially within our conversation, one of these signs was interpreted as directional. And not.
But even that, I mean, it's a small store and it's got four, three window signs, a door sign and a giant hanging sign. We don't, we don't want to turn the, you know, the village center into a, you know, an almost neon sign district. How many signs do you need to say this is the place, you're here?
Well, then that's the discretion of the board. You guys can.
Yeah, the only directional sign I see up there is the please, please use main entrance. I could say that's a directional sign. All the rest should be counted and should fall within the limits of the building.
Yeah, and that, that please use main entrance is .46 square feet. So we're still, we're still over 17 square feet just on these three signs alone. Here's a, by the way, to Chairman Miller's point, here's a, let's see. Okay. Here's the front of the store. So basically that is it. It's those three big windows and the door.
And the sign.
Plus a hanging sign that would be off of this rail here. So basically every bit of the windows would have signage and the door.
First of all, I think that's too much, too much sign. I also think the calculation, Jeff has now appointed our resident man of petition.
I resign.
It's way beyond the square foot, is that's, that's allowable. I think, I think it's too much signage. I mean, there could be, you know, records in the window or something or people, you know, people show their wares for display rather than.
Well, I would also suggest that the client, he has his logo on the left window with the please use other entrance and then logos also on the door. There was somewhat overkill in my opinion as well. So I can always go to him and see, you know, the.
And then you're over the limit no matter what. You have to redo the calculation.
Yeah, well, we could approve two out of the four signs tonight if you wanted to, if he's, wants to get up in business and that sort of thing. But we can't approve all five of them. At, at least as far as the calculations go, so I don't know how you want to deal with it.
I know he wants his signs to go up and he's open and trying to start. He's opening up as soon as he can.
So we can approve the hanging and the door sign and even one of the window signs probably and still be under the limit. But you might want to ask him which one he wants in terms of the three window signs.
Um, question, the the reason why the, the middle and the right hand sign are such large, 55 and a half by 50 and a half inches is because they're applied to the window with a black background?
Yeah, you're only supposed to measure the lettering.
Okay, that, that's what that measurement underneath.
But we don't like windows blocked. You know. Isn't there a surface calculation of the?
13 and a half by 45, right?
Yeah, that's what the graphic size of windows.
Yes, yeah, I get it, I get it.
Window sizes are.
I understand, but there, there's a maximum coverage of the window. We don't want black windows.
So, so wait a second. I think there's a little confusion.
They're not black windows. They're it's just the lettering, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I'm trying to ask. Is the lettering, it's just the lettering on the window, right? And Andrew, that backdrop there, that's not going on the window itself?
No, that's just showing.
Yeah. Despite the fact that with the area, it is 55, this is the dimension of the sign.
Yes.
13 and a half.
Yeah.
And those were the, those, that's what I used for the calculations.
And that adds up.
And it adds up. These three add up to 17.9 square feet.
Yeah, there's a limit on permanent signs based on the linear foot. And there's a 15% allowance for temporary interior signs. So if you're having a sale or something, you can put up a. So obviously we don't want to cover up the windows. You want to be able to project the vision into the storefront.
So it's supposed to look like that.
Yes, any part of the blast would still be exposed and just the graphics would be what we do actually apply.
But the records will size.
So, I guess you could go back to your client and say, does it have to be this blown up? Or can we scale them down?
I'm sure it would be.
So, to Member Clark, I mean, we could go with the two out of the four. And then you guys can come back next meeting for a scaled-down version of the three window signs.
Sure.
Or graphics.
Actually, do we have a motion to approve hanging sign and the door sign?
Let's take a look at the hanging sign. Here we go.
There's no lighting on the sign.
No.
No.
It's a nice-looking sign.
It's a nice-looking sign.
Because it's not white in the background, right?
And that is the whole sign, yes.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the door sign and the projecting sign.
No seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Think about what you want to do after that. Come back any time you want.
So, Andrew, talk with Dan. If he needs to talk to me, he can talk with me. Or you guys can reach out. And then the next meeting is September 21st.
October or?
No, September 21st.
September, oh.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay.
And is there a max worth footage amount? Just so I can fight the scale down. Do you want to stay within?
Well, you can't go over 30 square feet for a commercial business.
For total, yeah.
Total, for everything. And then if you go by, if you go and if you look in the code, what, Member Clark was talking, what John Clark was talking about, of by measuring the lettering itself and how it fits, it shouldn't exceed that 15%. You can make that calculation and just scale it down to where it's legible, but it's not as big as.
So, you have nine square feet available according to this, is that correct?
No, that's a different application.
Oh, sorry.
Jeff moved to the next.
I moved on. After we approved the, let's go back.
There were.
It doesn't say what the total approval is.
Oh, no, that's just, let me get the corrected page. All right, here we go.
So, 22.34 is available?
Yes.
All right. So, that's how much you have after the two that are approved.
Okay. We'll still speak to him and we'll, we'll come back with scale down.
We'll make the first two signs and put them up right away. And when it's done, please take a picture of them and get it to Ryan for the file. Okay? Good luck.
Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 21st.
Last item on the agenda is, is the boardroom. They proposed skate shop. Hi. One proposed hanging sign. I like that. So, this is where.
That doctor that we approved didn't go in.
Moved into the Patagolia shop.
So, your, your name for the minutes?
Chris Hoffman, this is my wife, Janay.
Fritz Hoffman?
Chris Hoffman.
Chris Hoffman?
Yes.
And Janay?
Yes.
So, this is, that one on the side?
One on the side, it was realtor, and then it was empty. And then we approved for a doctor, and he must have changed his mind.
All right, I remember. This is not the underwear store on the other corner. Somebody's digging.
We were behind Brad Dallas.
Right, somebody's digging in there. So, you know anything about that, Ryan?
We approved it.
You guys approved that.
That was the.
The SF does whatever interior design, whatever, whatever that means.
Whatever that means, right. Okay. So, the boardroom skate shop. Signs hanging on the building pointing towards the entrance, which is on Route 9?
No, the sign is.
In the alleyway there, but.
So, it's in the, it's facing that way.
The sign being on 9 inches, our door is not.
It's in the alleyway.
It's in the alley.
There was a sign there before, right?
Yes.
The bracket's still there?
It's there, yes.
The bracket's still there. What we did, I wasn't able to Photoshop our proposed sign onto. There is a building standard for the light fixture with the goose neck behind the picture. And I wasn't able to improve our sign onto that. But we should have done, and that's the only option we have.
It's the only option you have.
Are you going to have two lights or one?
This is the building standard, as you can see here. We didn't put our sign there, but it's one on each side, yes.
Okay. And it comes off the bracket?
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Yeah, we've approved those before.
I believe skateboarding is illegal in the village center, but I guess you could sell them.
Yes.
Yes.
We're working on that as well. We're working on skate park development. Behind the library, there's space designated for that.
There is in the Tasha Mazzarella Park Master Plumber, it's never built.
We're actually.
We're trying to get it.
We have a meeting next week across the street to talk about that. So, we're trying to give them an outlet, get them out of the village.
The only question I have is, is the brightness of the bulb in those two goose neck lamps. The one you specified was 150 watt, which is way too high.
It's whatever the building standard is.
Yeah, usually we suggest 40, 40 watt bulbs.
Oh, yeah, whatever.
That's fine.
Yeah. Because you really don't need a lot. And you don't want to have that glare out on the sidewalk.
Anybody have any other questions about the boardroom?
Seems simple enough. The first calculation is actually, I get 4.1 instead of 3.9, but that's close enough.
I'm sorry, that wasn't, that wasn't mine. Don't remind them.
Add that to his title. Okay, I have a motion to approve the signs for the boardroom.
I'll motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
With the condition that the bulbs be no more than 40 watt or equivalent.
Yeah, I guess we just go with whatever the limits use.
And as soon as the signs are up, take some pictures and send them to Ryan for the folder. Let somebody have a record on them. Okay.
Thank you very much, guys.
Good.
Thank you.
Vote?
We did.
You didn't say aye.
Did you say?
I don't think we said aye.
You didn't say aye.
All those in favor?
I said aye, you didn't.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You said aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Can we hear from Suzanne? I have the.
Yes, today's hot holiday.
Right.
That was quick after a long wait.
You should know.
Thank you. I should know that. What can I say? So, Jeff said it was sort of successful the last time, the first filming. The sound wasn't as good, that's why he's put microphones here and here. And I want to thank Jeff for doing this.
Great.
For us.
Hopefully it'll come out.
And we're going to make a test Friday. The first test was semi-successful, semi-failure. We're still excited to be at this here next Friday night. We're going to test Wednesday afternoon, Mike Frazier, Jeff and I. We think they have a plan that may work. But a Zoom hybrid meeting, that never succeeded. Try it out next Friday.
Have you told, have you told the rest of the guys about the new law?
Yeah, so, so the new law for us, beginning about the service side, is that the, the new governor said we can go back to Zoom till January, or we can do hybrid, or we can just have meetings. But people, I don't know, a couple of months ago, they were like, there was no COVID. And now it's like back almost to where it was, 850 cases, 40 people in the hospital. Two people died June, July, 14 died in August. So, it's like back. Do we feel comfortable having these meetings spread out with chairs like this? And, you know, would, would you like to go back to Zoom? Wait to pull the barge on?
I'm fine with Zoom.
You can get us over email too, if you don't want to bump the record.
Yeah, why, why, right, we're recording ourselves. So, why don't, why don't you send, why don't we send votes? We can send votes to Leah, we can send votes to me. Tell, Ryan could tell Suzanne, or I can write to her and say. Also, I got an email the last couple of days, says, could we have a vote?
Think about it.
Think about it. Are you comfortable with Zoom? You know, I got my booster shot on Saturday. Judy Guy has the week before, so I don't know, three shots, is that enough? She's wearing a mask forever. But I don't know if you're comfortable with that. So, think about it.
Yeah.
And I'll send out an email at the end of the weekend. You can vote over the weekend. Because Ryan needs time to notify them, here's the Zoom link, or we will be open to the public. I don't see any increased attendance or less attendance by having the meeting in public. There aren't Zoom, nobody ever comes. Not that you're welcome to come.
In that case, it doesn't make such a difference, does it? I mean, my only thinking was that maybe more people would be comfortable or less comfortable to come in person than to a Zoom meeting. But.
Yeah, I mean, that is a possibility, depending how things go in the next month or two.
I know. It's too early to tell.
I prefer in-person meetings, but.
The only two pennies, if the clerk can put in two pennies, is it is mighty difficult, and we can put this on record, it's mighty difficult with po, with public hearings, especially major ones. Because it's, it's hard to monitor everyone. I, I would, I would say that the prime example where things got out of hand is the.
Hotel?
Boutique Hotel over on Mill Street, where we had, at one point, four to five people all talking at once. And I think it just becomes white noise after a while. So, I'm good, but I'm not that good. I can't mute everyone in one clean sweep. So, just food for thought. The public hearings, from what I see coming down the tracks, are going to be numerous. One especially, the cell tower at the fairgrounds. They want to extend the antenna higher than what is in the code. So, they've applied for site plan and a variance to extend, I believe it's 14 to 15 feet higher than what is permitted.
Exactly, fine. See, I thought pipes, you had to be on every street corner.
This is for normal cell phones. This is for AT&amp;T's antenna on that cell, cell, cell tower.
You really think that's going to be controversial?
You can, I mean, you can also, you don't have to like make a decision and say, this is what we're doing until January. You could say, for this meeting, we'll be virtual, for this meeting, we'll be.
Is that hard on you if we?
If we flip-flop, I, I, I can't speak right now to, to that.
When do you have to know? Before the announcements go out?
Yeah, before the agenda's announced.
Yeah, the week before.
No, we have to notify in the paper. We have to notify in the paper. If there's a public hearing that night, it has to be 10 days prior.
That would be the only reason that I would want to do in person, is if there was something controversial in which 10 or 20 people might want to show up.
I mean, the only ones that I feel that it could be controversial for are the people that live on the rain drive, Seymour, and things like that. I mean, right now, the woods is a good, good blocker, but you go 15, I, I'm only guessing here, I have to look at the application again. You go certain height more, and that could change things. I mean, there are those who are worried that, you know, there's radio waves coming off these towers and that it can cause brain cancer. I mean, that, that, that was the discussions up in the village of Tibbely, when they wanted to increase their antennas on the water tower. So.
And of course, with the brokerage, that comes to something at some point.
When, whenever that.
There might be a, a lot people want to go to that. So, there are potential things, but I don't want to, it'd be confusing for the public to say we're going to be open this week and close next week.
I mean, my honest opinion would, would keep things as is and then find out what the legislation is going to be come January 1st, 2022.
But I feel relatively safe with a spread. You know, we could even spread a little bit more if you wanted to.
Yeah.
And just so you know, the village board is leaning towards keeping in person for the same exact reasons, for public hearings, for public comments, and stuff like that.
Yeah, there are certain people who can't manage Zoom.
Yeah.
And so, they're really being shut out.
Yeah. Well, and it's also hard. I mean, it's hard for everyone to have a public conversation.
Yeah.
That's true.
30 people on its computer.
I will have to say, when I review our YouTube page, there are views. I think the highest we've ever gotten was 60 views on one meeting. So, if people can't be here, essentially, they are informed later on.
Yeah, I guess, that was because of Zoom, we were, we quit for the first time ever.
Well, we're, we're gaining traction, you know. I'm back from vacation, I'm going to work with Jeff to get the last meeting up and rolling.
And Chrissy?
We're going to do this, that's sort of the next thing. I don't know when it's going to happen, but there's some personal, family issue, not issues, but things that Chrissy is dealing with right now. So, most likely, she's going to get caught up to a point, and then she will most likely resign as minutes clerk. So, right now, in and amongst everything else I do on a day-to-day basis, I'm trying to find a bridge to get us until we find someone new or if there's a new platform that we can utilize that gives us something in text form, some kind of transcript in text form.
Because that's not acceptable as an official document. It's got to be.
Well, that's being debated right now. Whether or not a video recording can be seen as minutes. I mean, there is transcription software, platforms out there that would get it down to text on pa, paper. The long game is, does that identify each speaker? Or do I have to do that? So, there's some details that need to be worked out.
Well, the one time we did it with nothing, when, when the governor just took the order in place without thinking about it, we had to do it with that, the old-fashioned way. And we had to keep saying, Michael Gee's speaking. I have a question about, you know, you had to identify yourself each time. So, I was writing down the minutes and it wasn't here. I wish the minute taker's always been able to come here. If we find someone new, it'd be great just to come here for an hour, an hour and a half on a Tuesday night and take some notes so you remember how to write the minutes.
Mr. Chair, it's been a little longer than that. Our last meeting, I believe Jeff clocked it at two hours. So, I don't know.
All right.
It was just start just turning P, P people away, saying, ah, you don't have to build that this, this year. You can come back next year.
You said we, we virtually have everybody coming back except the two signs on the 21st. And you said the 21st has a busy agenda.
Yes, well, I mean, the one on 30 Livingston, you guys said October. So, it's on the record. So, I guess he has no problem with coming back in October. So, we're going to keep it.
But Lydia won't be at the planning, at the zoning board until after the 21st?
No, before. The third Thursday is the 16th.
Ah, okay.
We were planning on coming back early October, so you can put this to October.
All right. And then we asked, everybody here is coming back. Helen and Lisa are coming back. The swimming pool is coming back.
And Mr. Casano's coming back.
He might not.
I don't know. Who knows? Who knows? Who knows? So, I think we're ready to motion to adjourn.
Yes. I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll send the email out and we can vote over the weekend.